Okay, just to note, Chad is Chad Rittenhour's absent this evening. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second. By Todd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero. Next up is the consent agenda. These items are routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on these unless a board member or citizen so requests it. On the consent agenda tonight is the check wire transfer dispersment, the bank reconciliation statement from May 2015, the approval of the school board minutes of the regular board meeting on June 1st, and also of the board's study session, June 22nd, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed, along with the membership in the C, Schools for Equity and Education, the MSBA membership renewal, the Metro ECSU general services fee for membership for 2015-16, and membership in the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, AMSD. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agendas?
So moved.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero. Next up is the resolution for acceptance of gifts. Bear with me as I find my page. Where is it? Sorry. It says page 26, but am I missing it? No, that's too far.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Well, I don't see it in here, sorry. I'm gonna go to my online version then. Okay. Oh, here we go. Okay. Thank you. Alrighty. Okay, so resolution for acceptance of gifts. Alright, I'm trying to remember. Do I have to read these? I forget. No, do I? Okay, thank you. We have monetary and also values and kind. This is a roll call vote. Do I have a motion to accept the resolutions for gifts?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
I'll second the motion.
By Rich. Okay, roll call, Ben.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Alright, that passes six zero. Thank you. Okay, next session is Laker Pride, and this evening, I don't have, you want, go ahead. You can go up there. Thank you. Alright, this evening we have some student artwork presentation by Grant Trembley and the Prior Lake Savage Optimists, which, is Anita here? Okay.
Good evening. Being new to the district, one of the first things that I noticed in the district office is the display of student artwork. I'm very excited tonight to have us take a look at the latest piece that will soon be on the walls of the district office as well. I'd like to introduce Anita Dretlau, President of the Prior Lake Savage Optimist Club, and the artist, Grant Trembley. If you would please come forward and give a brief description about how the artwork was chosen, and then Grant, if you could give us some insights into the piece, that would be fantastic.
Alright, so, this piece is all watercolor, and it's one of my first watercolor, actually, the first watercolor besides some of my, what do you call it, sketches with watercolor. But the reason I chose this is because my teacher told us that we needed to think of a story to portray throughout a picture, and like have basically a montage throughout it. So I was gonna choose Interstellar, Evil Dead III, or Alice in Wonderland, and I chose Alice in Wonderland because my teacher, like, that was the only one that he had seen of all the movies or read of the books. And, yes. Yeah, exactly. And so I chose that, and then I also chose it because, or I chose those three movies or stories because they all portray vibrant colors and like, very like, cool stories throughout them, and that is pretty much why I like chose it, but like, some of the aspects throughout it are just kinda like, right here we have like some fighting between the White Castle and the Red Castle, the Red Castle being evil, as you can see with the darkness, and then the White Castle with the color. Alice had just obviously come into the Wonderland and was rather confused looking throughout what she, looking throughout the Wonderland, and then this is also her falling down. The dog really is like my favorite part because, as you can see, like, he looks rather sad, and the reason he is sad is because in the movie there is a dog, and it was only in like the second one when she was older, and if you notice, nearly the dog is not mad, sad, he's not, you can't really tell if it's mad or sad, but like, basically like, at first he was rather evil, but he was forced to be evil, but in the end, he chose to be on Alice's side because he was kinda like forced, like his family was taken, and like, to have them back, he was forced to go after Alice, and so with him, you can't really tell whether he's on her side or not at that point, and that's pretty much my presentation on the piece. Questions?
Well, the Prior Lake Optimist Club, Prior Lake Savage Optimist Club does this every year where we go to the high school, to the art show, and a group of members, usually three to four, look at all our pieces, and they chose this one, this wasn't on the committee actually, but they said that it was very colorful and detailed and interesting to look at is what their comments were, for why they chose it. So, we like to purchase this, which is normally what we do, so here is your chat for purchased artwork. So congratulations.
Okay, next up is the open forum, and this is a 15-minute time period that's set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment on the board agenda, and is there anyone that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none.
Person say goodbye.
Oh, yes.
Alright, yeah. Yep, thank you.
Alright, up is personnel items. Matt?
Good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Stallow. First up, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
I'll second the motion.
By Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
And next, I would like to present the following leaves of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the leaves of absences as listed?
So moved.
By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero as well.
And next, I'm presenting the district retirement of Tom Hassig, and I would like to say a couple of words. Tom has been with the district for 27 years, our high school choir director, shoes that are most certainly not easily filled here, and I was thinking back to some of the conversations that I've had with Dave Lund about Tom Hassig, and some people maybe would not like to have been discussed quite as much with their high school principal and the district's HR director, but they were all positive in nature. And a couple of those things that always came out was, number one, tremendous passion for working with students, putting on absolutely top-notch shows, and really getting the best out of students. Another thing that came up over and over again was the work ethic that Tom Hassig displayed. They've always said, if Tom's going to do something, if you've asked him to or he's decided to, it's going to be amazing, and that's a heck of a legacy to leave, especially in those years right before your retirement to still be at that level, really creating wonderful opportunities for kids. So, it's a big thank you for Tom Hassig after 27 years with the district, so, very nicely done, Tom.
Alright, and I'd also like to echo that too, just as my youngest has now gone through the high school, and just many, many kids, just, he ignited the passion, I would say, in choir for a lot of kids in the district, so I wanna thank him personally for his years of service. Alright, do I have a motion to approve the district retirement as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second.
Second.
By Melissa. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
And next up, I'm giving an update on the building substitute program that we started running in this last year. As I think everyone's aware, we have had a significant substitute shortage throughout the metro, and Prior Lake Savage area schools is by no means immune. One of the steps that we took to address that was hiring building subs, and when we looked at the cost of doing so, we really discovered that it was pretty minimal to operate under that model. In addition to that, we get really quality substitutes in our buildings on a daily basis operating that way, and we did see a significant reduction in a couple of areas, number one, and most importantly, at the elementary level, we had fewer teachers being pulled from their specialist assignments, so that we didn't have kids missing out on their specialist classes like FIAD, art, music, and media, and that's a tremendous win for students and for those professionals to be able to deliver their curriculum on those days. And in addition, we did have a reduction, not as great as we would like to see, but we'll keep working at it, a reduction in the number of teachers that needed to sub over their prep periods, and that allows them to be better prepared for class and to just really deliver at their best level. So amongst all of the other things that we're doing to try to make an impact here, this is something that we feel has been successful, so that I would come back and give a report after we tried this for half a year. I think that it was successful, and so this is an update rather than asking for approval. We didn't have an end date on the initial positions, but I wanted to make sure that nobody had any other questions, and if you do, I can certainly answer those.
Any questions?
I had one. Can you just tell me what the split was again between elementary and other the five positions? Who's?
Yes, so we've got two at the elementary, one at the middle level, and one at the high school. I'm sorry, two at the middle level, nope. We've got one at the high school, one at the middle school campus, and three at the elementaries.
Okay, and that seems to be working with going?
That seems to be working, as we're looking at this a little bit harder, you know, if it makes sense to look at something differently, we certainly will.
Okay. Yep.
So, for instance, would a second one at the middle level be overkill?
It may not be. We were looking at the numbers, there were very few days where that would have been overkill, so that's something that I think we will be considering. It will not be too late to bring that in early September, late August, because there will be some excellent teaching candidates out there where that's exactly what they're gonna be looking to do for the next year.
Okay.
And the feedback from staff?
The feedback from staff has been excellent. I think that it's been much appreciated, because it has not solved all of our problems, but it's a help, and it shows that we are trying to do what we can here.
Alright, and you said that was a report only?
Yes, that was a report only. And then I do have a staffing request this evening, all in the area of educational support. First of all, as the board is aware, we are going to be offering a lunch service at Edgewood for the first time. In order to facilitate that, we do need a part-time kitchen helper, so that is the first position up here is for a three-hour-a-day kitchen helper at Edgewood, and the funding for that position will come from the Food Services Fund. Then we have a request for a .5 custodial FTE at Edgewood, Bridges, and Westwood, and that campus has really grown large in terms of what's offered there, the square footage, just the number of programs that we have at those sites, and along with that has come increased needs for custodial services, and this very much reflects what our other campuses would have for service. And then, the funding for that position would come from the General Fund, and that has been included in the budgets that you've seen thus far. And then lastly, we have an increased request for secretarial support in the Activities Office. This is a very small increase, it's an additional five days for each of the clerical employees in that office. We currently have times both in the spring and then at the end of the summer where we've got sports running, and we don't have anyone in the Activities Office, which is running, we're running into problems with that, so this is taking a stab at fixing that, and that will be funded by the General Fund. So that's my request this evening.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the educational support staffing request?
So moved.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Melissa. Any questions on any of those? Alright, alright, seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero. Thank you. Old business, we have no old business, onto new business. Mr. Reitz, I think you're up for your first board meeting, welcome. First of many.
I hope so. Hi, good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Stallow. Because this is my first board meeting, I don't know the process for opening this presentation. Do I just, is it just right here on the desktop?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it would be all together, but it's great. So I come to you tonight looking for approval for a $10 fee increase to our co-curricular programs across the board. This was information that was shared with me with the outgoing AD, Mr. Rodine. We took a look at the budget really over the last four years since we lasted our fee increase, and we noticed some cost of living increases that has affected mainly our transportation budget. It's also affected our officials. We are part of the Metro Fee Association for Officials, and the cost across the board for all of our sports has gone up about a dollar to $2 per game, and we have several officials, you may have a game with three officials all the way up to six or seven officials, so that, over time, has increased our costs by quite a bit, almost $2,000 a year, just over $2,000 a year. And then we also have just our cost of living increases for our supplies and uniforms, anywhere between $5,000 and $6,000 depending on what we're replacing each year. The anticipated revenue increase is about $14,000, that's based on the unique enrollment numbers that we give to MDE each year, so I just took that and did the math. If we have larger numbers, which I do anticipate in the next couple of years, our numbers should go up in some of our non-team sports, you know, where we're not doing any cutting, so that number could increase, but this would go a long way into helping us with our annual budget and balancing that and making sure we can provide the opportunity that we hope to for kids. Any questions on that?
Go ahead, Dan.
As someone who's constantly advocating going the other direction with fees, I'm wondering why with a budget this, as big as ours, why this can't just be supplemented by the district instead of nicking the parents again for another 10 bucks when we have several sports that are significantly above the metro average to begin with? We're not talking about a $200,000 shortfall.
Well, I mean, we did, the next slide here is a comparison to the metro, and we are skewed because our fees for certain sports like hockey, golf, and gymnastics are higher than the metro average. We are at or below the average in most of our activities. Those three though make our average spike at 240, and the average across the metro is 216, but there's, it's an apples-to-oranges comparison in some of those activities. For instance, we golf at the Wilds Golf Course, and the fees are a little bit higher. Some programs structure golf a little bit differently where the kids pay the membership, and they don't pay an activity fee at all, so that drives the metro average down. We pay, they pay a larger fee, but then they don't pay green fees when they get out there, and that would be the same for, you know, sports like Alpine. Gymnastics, because of the safety and things like that, we have an extra spotter, which drives the cost up a little bit, but for the most part, our fees are at or below the metro average with the exception of three or four co-curricular sports.
Go ahead, Rich.
A little big outlier I see there is the hockey. Is that for both boys and girls?
Yes, it is.
Why is that?
Well, hockey's our most expensive sport. The ice time is quite a bit, major component to that, you know, and really across the metro, that's one of the higher fees. Some districts have been able to keep that fee down, but most of the schools within our conference are at least approaching that $400 watermark or have exceeded it, in some cases far exceeded it. So it's not really out of the realm of reasonable to have our hockey families pay that fee, and then we cover all the ice time for them.
The other piece of that is that we choose not to lease levy for ice time, nor do we lease levy for golf, and so when districts do that, they're able to lower those fees. We've chosen not to do that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if I remember this wrong, board members, but the last slide we saw, when we saw the study session, I think, when Eric presented the information, I'm not saying, this is fine, but there was more South Suburban, and we looked a little low compared to South Suburban, I mean...
Right, so with the South Suburban, you're comparing really four districts. You have Shakopee, Farmington, and then 196 and Lakeville, and so we fall in the middle of those. Shakopee and Farmington are lower than we are, but ISD 196 and Lakeville are higher than we are, so comparatively speaking to the conference, we really are right in the middle. I mean, it is reasonable to suggest a $10 increase.
And that'll still keep us the same?
Correct. Yes, and those numbers, when I looked at those numbers, we had already looked at what our fees would be with the $10 increase, and we were still right in the middle of that group. Farmington is in the middle of a study now, and it sounds like their fees are gonna go up as well. I just don't know to what degree. I've also been in touch with the Bloomington schools, and they're looking at a $20 increase per. So once all the dust settles, we'll have an updated spreadsheet, and we'll be able to compare those and see where we're at, but we are probably gonna land right in the middle of the metro.
Any other questions?
How do these compare to your former district?
They're much lower than Lakeville, so Lakeville did just move their hockey from 600 down to 420, but the majority of their fees are between 275 and 300, and we're much lower. And the other thing that drives our average up is cheer, and we offer a pretty robust program that some schools don't even offer, so you're comparing it to a lot of districts that don't even provide that same program, so it does drive our fee up, that comp cheer is a pretty expensive fee. But yes, Lakeville's much higher.
And you said this is four years since we raised it?
It's been four years, correct.
Any other questions? Alright, do I have a motion to accept the $10 increase to the activities?
So moved.
By Ben, second.
I'll second the motion.
By Rich. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-1. Alright.
The other thing I'm reporting on today doesn't require board action, it's just a summary of a program that was implemented last year. The board voted to allow athletes, or sorry, students with a student ID into our non-football and hockey events. I'm just sharing with you our attendance numbers. What our ticket takers did was count the number of students that entered our games, our non-hockey and football games, and so we could compare that to the previous year. These were numbers that were given to me by Eric Rodine. In most cases, we had greater attendance. From the feedback that I got, both in the community and from Eric on his way out, is that it was a very positive decision that was made by the board and was overwhelmingly supported by our community. I do think there are things that I can do coming in with our super fans and generating some activities and some more excitement, and working with our parent groups and our booster groups to try to increase those numbers again. Obviously, we wanna provide a positive, chemical-free environment for our students, and this goes a long way in getting them to a safe venue where they can enjoy each other, and then obviously, we love the school spirit part of this. Lakeville did just pass a similar policy, they're allowing all of their students in free to all non-football and hockey games, and Shakopee did this last year, so it's a trend that's starting to gain momentum, and as we meet across the South Suburban Conference, a lot of our focus and emphasis is on improving the fan experience for our kids, and working with our super fans to make sure it's a positive environment, and this is one step in doing that, so I would hope to see it continue. We were, I think, in theory, hoping that our numbers would skyrocket, but in all truth, it's very difficult with all the things going on to get our, some of our student body to our contests, but as I work with them, hopefully we can continue to do that. Any questions on that policy? Or thoughts?
Any questions? I'll just make a personal thought, because my daughter was a senior last year, and she loved it. I mean, and I think there was a hindrance to paying, and especially, they would go, you know, they would, you know, if she was busy, she could go for a half or whatever that she could, so, I mean, I think it was a great thing. I think, you know, when we looked at it before, I know a couple of the seasons were a little shorter for home games, so I think, you know, getting another year under our belt and having us be able to take attendance numbers will help too, but I see it as a huge positive. I think it's really the right thing to do. It's them supporting their classmates, so I hope to continue it.
And there are nights where we had volleyball, soccer, and swimming all on the same night, and the kids would come and go to all those three events and feel the support, so that was also a very nice piece to this.
Alright, any other questions? Comments?
Alright, seeing none, do we have approval, or do I have a motion to approve the continuation of free admission for Prior Lake High School students with student ID to all activities except for football and boys hockey and musicals for the upcoming year?
So moved.
By Todd, second. By Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
Thank you very much.
Alright, and next up is the award bakery products, the milk and dairy contracts. Janine, right? Yep, alright.
Alright, good evening, members of the board. Dr. Stalik, I'd like to recommend to the board to approve two bids for the 2015-16 school year. You should have a copy of the bid analysis, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, one being for dairy for Hastings Co-op Creamery, and then the second for bread for Earth Grains, both as the apparent low bidder.
Any questions? Go ahead, Melissa.
I was curious, there was just Earth Grains that...
Yeah, good question, because I was gonna ask it if you didn't.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we just have Earth Grains, no other, the other ones, there was no bid?
It's mainly due to our delivery schedule of what we require. We need our vendor to deliver before the lunch period to ensure fresh bread for that day for the kids. If they deliver after, then we're giving our kids stale bread, and that's not what we wanna give our customers, so it's not a schedule that's easy to meet for a lot of vendors, so that's primarily why we don't get as many bids.
But we've had them, haven't we had them as a vendor for a while?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. I know we had them this year, this last year.
Okay, so the cost is probably gonna be pretty much similar now?
We know that, okay. Alright, any other questions? Alright, seeing none. Do I have a motion to accept the milk and dairy and bakery products bids for the upcoming year, 2015-16?
So moved.
By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Ben. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the city Prior Lake liaison officer.
Good evening.
Good evening. We, every year, we bring this, usually in June, to the board to approve a school liaison officer. This is at the middle schools. It's 50% that we share with the City of Prior Lake for this officer to be at our schools just because of our year. You know, we don't have the full year, so we don't have that full cost as well. The cost is going up 2.7% for next year, and I recommend that we approve this school liaison officer. Any questions?
Any questions?
This one, we have Julie, a similar agreement with the City of Savage for the high school.
We do.
How's the 2.7% increase over there?
It's a little bit less than it has been in the past.
It is, okay. Any other questions? All right, all those, oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the liaison officer with the City of Prior Lake?
I'll make that motion.
By Rich, second?
Second.
By Dan, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero. And you're still up.
I am. I just want to bring this to your attention. Let me see if I can make it a little bit bigger for you, since you will be looking at this. This is, you have it in your board packet also, but we wanted an update a little bit on our enrollment numbers, where we are currently for starting of school for 15-16, and also, where did we end the year for 2014 and 15? Let me scroll down here, if I can squeeze this in. So if you scroll down a little bit, you can see if I'm going to start in the very far column to the right, and that is our total budget number that we are, we'll be close to this, right at 7,500 students. If we recall, last year, we started the year with a budget of 7,469, and we upped it for the final budget in December to 7,519. So we are a few students short this year for the first time. But overall, it's not a lot of money because of the way they've changed the waiting schedule. It's about a shortfall of about $116,000. Overall, that's less than a half of a percent, even 0.002, of our overall budget. Not that I like that, to say we're getting a little bit less revenue, but that is where we ended up, or we'll be close to that, yes.
Do you know where that is? Like, where's that shortage that, a student population-wise?
There's a couple of reasons. When we went back and looked, first of all, it's kindergarten. We had a lot of students, I shouldn't say a lot, we had a handful of students that started the year at a half-day. So those students only count for half of the time, even though we see on some of our reports, we have one student, or you know, there's maybe five or six students that went part-time. You know, when we look at them, we think they're there full-time, but they're really not. They're only there half of a day. And also, we had several students come in through the middle of the year and start in our district, and so our numbers went up throughout the year. But of course, we don't see that full revenue, or the full, what we would call, average daily membership or pupil unit for that student for the full year. So those numbers in kindergarten were less than what we anticipated. And also, at our high school, we had, we budgeted for about 60 students to be PSEO. We had a little over that, but we say, when I, Mr. Lund can help me out here, but 30 students is about our average that go full-time PSEO. And another 30, or 60 students go part-time PSEO. But what we maybe found out this year is they went a little more, more than part-time to PSEO, maybe took just one or two classes at the high school, where I anticipated they would have been there at least half of the time. And so some of those things, you know, it only takes a few of those things to, you know, knock that number down. We are really close, that number is really close. I feel comfortable. We've really looked into and delved into making sure that we are getting, you know, we are allotting for the right student count. We still have a couple issues left out there. We still don't know if kids are going to intermediate schools and how that affects us, so that number can go up or down one or two students yet. It's still pretty early in submissions for our Mars reports, but I'm pretty comfortable with the 7,500 student number. So when we look at our next year for 15-16, or I should say our current year, because we're now after July 1, we are looking at our elementary. You can see in red the 15-16 enrollment, what I use for budgeted numbers. The top line is our total students in all of our schools, all of our elementary schools, and the numbers we have. So we're about, we're 547 for kindergarten right now, a budget for 545, so you can see we're two students right now over that budget. But as you look across, overall, we're still 64 students short. This is pretty typical that we're short on this time of year, and we see students start coming in August 1st, and the stores start having the school supplies out there, and all of a sudden, parents are like, oh yeah, I need to register my students. So we'll see that happening here in August, that we'll see some additional enrollment in those elementary grades. The middle school, we're still 20, we're 21 over, and at the high school, we're 69 over. As we always talk about this time of year, we don't know those students that are leaving our district. So this is not unusual that we are this many students over. So you remember, we lose about 50 kids, which we don't really lose because we don't know they're not coming to school here. So we'll start the school year thinking they're coming to school here, and all of a sudden, we get notification from another school asking for their records. So that middle level, the parents at the elementary level are really good about letting us know that their student is no longer going to be coming to school here. But it's those students at those upper levels that we just don't know that they're not, no longer will be attending. So when we look at these numbers in September 1 versus October 1, we lose about 50 kids, and that's very typical for us. So I like to see these numbers higher, and I'm hoping that they will continue to grow. We're still, as you can see overall, above our budgeted number. So we're up 26, but I'd like to see that. I'd like to see that elementary, those are the solid numbers in my mind, so if we could get those additional, that would be great. Any questions about the enrollment update?
I was just going to say, I mean, there's going to be a lot of movement the next month or so.
You should see a lot of movement.
And we have two board meetings, correct, in August? Right, for kind of that purpose, okay. So we'll be keeping a tight watch on it?
We will be keeping an eye on that along with staffing to see what we need to do.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next up is Jim, I believe, with the school attendance areas. There you are.
Good evening, Chair Rual, School Board, Dr. Stalow. I would like to bring forward discussion and board action on two developments in our savage, part of our savage district. I will bring them up. This here is the aggregate, parolic aggregate. As this develop moves forward, I'm requesting that we put these students in Greenwood Elementary. Right now, they are currently in a different attendance area.
Would it be Redtail? Is that where they're in?
Yes, Redtail.
Okay.
You can see by the overall elementary map. This right here is 44 and 27. So this is the area that we're looking at now on the Google map.
Okay, so where are we asking it to be moved to? What color?
Greenwood, which was the...
Is that green? Gray?
Green.
Green or gray?
Gray.
Gray, okay.
Gray.
Okay.
Our next development, the Ryland development, and that is in Savage as well. It's the Bond Farm for anyone familiar with that development. This is partially Burnsville and shares with our district as well. It's kind of one of the outliers of our district.
And that would be Glendale currently?
This currently is Glendale. And I'll bring up the other map. And we're, I'm proposing Jeffers Pond.
Is Jeffers Pond 10? Is that where they're at?
This is 10, yes, correct.
Okay, and so they're up there in that corner up there?
Yep, yeah, right in. Right here.
Okay.
This, we've done this in the past, behind Rainbow Foods and as well as the, by the middle schools, the development, Fish Point.
And we've just, the two elementaries basically are, I mean, Redtail and Glendale, we shut down for open enrollment. And so we're saying it's best for right now, the way the boundaries are, is to move this stuff.
Correct, it'll help balance our school sites.
Is there a big increase in transportation time?
Actually, for Jeffers Pond, it'll be noticeable, but they haven't turned any earth there. None of this work is beginning until this fall, so we're thinking we get through this year, it'll probably be next year, 16-17.
Before we really have to put it in action?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Yeah, because there's no housing at either of those sites as of today, so...
No road, no infrastructure, no houses yet.
Well, and I know when we did this in the previous, it's always been helpful for when they're selling the lots to say, this is where you're going, or this is the attendance. And so it's just being open with what's happening. So I know it's really helped us in the past. We did have quite a bit of discussion about it at the last board session, but does anyone have any other questions or comments? Okay.
I guess I do have one question. So if in the future we end up building a new school, and we kind of look at rezoning, districting, however, do these two, obviously, the parolic aggregates is the main topic, but then does the Ryland development kind of fall back into kind of how everything is rezoned, and kids then get kind of re-put in different buckets?
We can start from scratch and that whole deal. Yeah, so do what makes sense.
Yeah, because that doesn't, I mean, typically, you wouldn't have it that way.
Right. So yeah, at that point, it's kind of a reset, you know, knowing that our, you know, our families like neighborhood schools, so, because we know that's an important thing. Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the students in the Ryland District north of, north on 27 by Savage, being moved to Jeffers Pond Elementary? And also for the students in Prior Lake aggregates development just south of the high school, being assigned to Greenwood? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Todd, second by Dan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And then, are you still up?
I'm still up, thank you. Also, before you, I have health and safety budget that I'm seeking approval for. So we're allowed to levy funds for our health and safety program. Along with that, I'm asking for approval of the policy, which I know you've recently approved, but this also is a requirement from the MDE, so we can levy health and safety funding. And I think Julie's got a few words to say about some changes that are coming to health and safety.
Okay, come on up.
So for this, for this year, for FY 16, which is the current year that we are now in, we will be approving or asking the board to approve the current, what you have in front of you. In the future, though, there's new legislation that says that we will be coming back to the board and asking you to approve something very similar to this, but it'll be for 10 years, and it'll also include all of the capital defer, I should say deferred maintenance items that we would normally not come to the board for levy. What they've allowed us to do is now levy for additional dollars for deferred maintenance items, similar to what we do for health and safety items. So that will be for the next year. The issue is, is that, and a reason why I wanted to bring it tonight to you is because our levy certification has to be approved in September, that means that this 10-year plan has to come to the board and be approved in August. However, we don't have all the information that we need from the Department of Education to do that right now. So it's going to be a very quick process for us to come to you and look into this. We'll be doing our work behind the scenes to make sure that we're getting the best information that we have. We'll work with Nexus to get some of this information as well. I just wanted you to know that the max revenue for fiscal year 17 will be $193 per pupil unit, and then it goes up to $292 for FY 18 and $380 for the FY 19. So it does increase, and the nice part about this is that we get equalization, which means we get about 25% of that revenue will be aid, so state aid. It won't be levied, so we could actually levy the same amount that we're levying now if we chose to, and we'd actually get an extra 25% of that will come as aid to our district. That's what I'm kind of preliminarily seeing. That could change a little bit as I really dig into the numbers and get more information and the spreadsheets from the Department of Education. But that's what it looks like right now. And there's a couple of different ways that we can do that, that work, but I'll be bringing more information to you in the future as to how that will work. But I wanted you to be forewarned that we'll be coming quickly, the next couple of board meetings, to look at this and to have it approved for the levy in September.
Is there any questions on any of that? All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion to, now, am I doing both the policy and the, at the same time?
Correct, policy and budget.
Okay, so approving the health and safety budget proposal as requested, and then also approving board policy 810 as part of it? That was just updated. Do I have a motion? By Ben, second by Todd. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero.
Thank you.
All right. And next up is policy. Dr. Stalow?
Excellent. Good evening, board members. We're bringing four policies to you this evening. The first reading of each policy took place at the June 27 boardwork session. After considering suggested revisions, this is the second and final reading. Board action is requested, and we'd like to bring each policy forward for consideration separately tonight. The first policy is Policy 427. It's a new policy mandated by MDE. We're following the Minnesota School Board Association template and guidance on this policy. The purpose of the policy is to establish general parameters for determining the workload limits of special education staff who provide, excuse me, services to children with disabilities receiving direct special education services 60% or less of the instructional day. It's the recommendation of administration to approve this policy.
Okay, and just to note that I think it's, they're actually changing the number to 429, because they like to do that to us.
You're right.
Just so you know, that's the way it is in our board packet. I'm assuming it's 429, right, Martha? It's right in our board packet? Okay. So, all right, do I have a motion to approve 429 as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Todd? Any discussion at all on this? It's pretty straightforward, it's right out of MSBA, so, all right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero. All right.
The second policy under consideration is the facility use policy. Facilitator Coordinator Gina Fern has surveyed surrounding areas, and the suggested increases that were shared on June 22 with the board are highlighted in the board packet. It is the recommendation of administration to approve this policy.
Is there any questions on any of this? This was really, Gina took a long time, and she works with a number of metro schedulers to kind of come up, and they share information, and this is really kind of keeping us middle of the road. There isn't big increases really anywhere, but I think it's just to kind of keep us in line with what we're doing, and we haven't had any significant increases in quite a while. It's easier to take little ones, I think. It's easier to take little ones, I think, is what they tell me. Any questions?
Just a note that this policy was reviewed during.
Yes, it was. Thank you, Rich. Um, and we did have quite a bit of discussion on it. Is there any other questions or anything? All right, seeing none. Um, do I have a motion to approve the facility use guidelines as stated?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero.
The next policy is policy five oh nine pertaining to the enrollment of students. Minnesota School Board Association made revisions to this policy, which requires adding lottery language. In addition, we will need to post the lottery guidelines to the website as requested by M S B A. It's the recommendation of administration that we approve this policy.
Okay, is there any questions on this? Um, I think we'd also had discussion um, during the board study session. Um, and I think we do do a lottery at. Thank you, because I can never say that word. Um, and so I, this is, I mean, it's something that we're familiar with and this is basically taking that same format. But now that it's required by state law, we have to, to have to post it, so um, this is all pretty straightforward. All right, any, any other comments, questions, okay? Um, do I have a motion to approve uh, five oh nine enrollment of students?
So moved.
By Todd, second?
Second.
By Ben, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, that's six zero. And last up?
And finally, we'll address the major magnitude field trips. Uh, we'll maintain our current status um, of a moratorium on all international travel. And we propose adding language to provide the superintendent discretion to send an administrator on any major magnitude field trip in consultation with the building administrator. This will be considered part of the trip cost. It's the recommendation of administration to approve this addition.
Um, is there any questions on this? Go ahead, Dan.
I'm just wondering, on page one twenty-one, um, under specific regulations, why, does it even speak to why we limit the summertime trips to fourteen days?
Mr. Yeah.
Why would we care?
Do we care?
Good answer.
Well, it was the policy that was here when I got here.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just been there, I don't think we've really looked at the long end, it's more been the short end that we've.
I mean, I assume this isn't a hard fourteen days.
I don't think Mr. White, anybody, uh, when the policy was developed years ago, decided to differentiate between that which happened during student contact time and that which did. I think it was one policy that came out on cover.
Okay. I was just curious, I guess I could, I'm just wondering why we would care if it was a three-week before trip? I mean, she certainly wouldn't want to be elsewhere, but since it is voluntary, especially in the summertime, I guess I don't know why we would limit it. But whatever.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think since like I've shared this with Dan, I've probably looked at this policy, I mean, eight times, I think, in the four years. Um, I would say that would be something um, that we should look at for the next time we review it, probably in three months. That, let's find out why we're doing that. Um, and if it becomes an issue with someone in the meantime, we can always do a variance.
In the past, we actually had one, uh, last summer's field trip over the fourteen days, it was a summer one. And according to policy, then I just had to bring it to the board for board approval because it went outside of the guidelines of the policy. It was a, actually a fifteen-day trip that was a summer trip to Germany. And I brought that one forward at uh, March board meeting, if I'm correct.
Yeah, there's some leeway there with your discretion, that'd be, I mean, I'm comfortable with the language, that's.
Okay. Yeah, and I think we had discussion quite a bit on this um, as, as well at the board meeting about the administrator um, being sent. Um, I think we've had issues in the past, um, which it would have been very helpful to have someone in an administrative role, um, whether that be having to send a student back early or, you know, just handling any type of situation is to have that extra um, advisor basically there is really an important thing. We, I, I think, you know, traveling and doing international travel and any type of travel now, um, there's lots involved and so I think um, this kind of helps us um, make sure that we have things covered. And so um, we're obviously leaving it to the superintendent's, you know, um, discretion. But I think it's something that um, we've all kind of talked about and would like to see go in that direction, so. All right. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the major magnitude field trip?
So moved.
By Melissa, second?
Second.
By Dan, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero. All right. And next up is the superintendent report.
Excellent, thank you, I'd like to begin my report tonight with a big thank you. After a little over a week in the district, I'm off to a great start and feel very energized by uh, the people and the work around me. I've already met with several administrators and school board members and have been in almost every building in the district. I'll continue to meet one-on-one with the admin team to start to get to know them and begin to shape plans for our administrative retreat in August, which will help us prepare for the upcoming year. I also look forward to meeting with parents, student staff and getting involved in the community as the school year gets underway. Thank you all for the very warm welcome, it's great to be here. And for my first official board meeting, it is my honor to announce that for the sixth year in a row, Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has won the prestigious cer- certificate of excellence in financial reporting award from the Association of the School Business Officials International. We have earned the certificate for providing a high-quality, comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year end two thousand fourteen. The certificate represents the highest standard for financial reporting and is only awarded to school districts that have exceeded the standards of the program. Earning this award is a testament to the integrity and technical competence of our entire business staff. Congratulations to you Julie and to your staff.
All right. Awesome, okay, any administrative reports? Okay. Um, board reports, I think we'll have a student council sometime in September, I'm hoping, is that right, Dave? Okay, perfect, yep, student council, so we don't have anybody today. Um, anyone else have any board reports? Melissa, did you want to just share where we're going to be going in the next week or so on our trip?
Sure.
And who's going?
On Sunday, we'll be having a group going to the um, CAPS program down, seeing the Blue Valley program and, and international, or national opportunity to help us understand more about the innovation zone and what that will be. And I think we've got what, seven of us?
Mm-hmm, Chad, um, myself and you, Dr. Stallow and some administrators from the high school.
It would be an exciting opportunity for us to really dive in and see um, how we want to develop this program for the innovation zone that we're doing in partnership with Lakeville. And for an opportunity for us to interact with them and make, make some initial planning decisions.
Great. Yeah, it'll be, we're kind of, I'm pretty excited about it, so. All right. Um, future events, uh, we have the Lake Fu- uh, excuse me, Lakefront Music Fest uh, coming up this weekend, always a big hit. Um, July seventeenth and eighteenth. And that's down at Lakefront. And then August tenth, um, we have our joint meeting with the city of Savage at five-thirty here. And then right on top of that is our regular board meeting at seven, um, also here. And then at this point, um, I'd be looking for a motion to uh, go into closed session to discuss our negotiation strategy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, by Rich, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That's six zero. Thank you, we'll just take a couple minute break.